It started. All right, good evening. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Newington Board of Education to order. Today is Tuesday, July 11. And the time is 7:01 PM. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a couple of agenda items, all discussion items this evening. So we'll move right to Agenda Item C, which is new business. And Item number one is a discussion. It's findings issued by the Board Council. So I thought for this discussion, what we could do is, I think in your folder you have items, basically in the order in which they happen?
Yeah, the order packet of C1 is the first agenda item, and then there's the C1A, B, C, D.
Okay, right. So C1, okay, so the opinion from Tom Mooney is in response to everything, basically C1, A, B, C, D. So we have like all the supplemental materials here. So again, just to recap, back in, I believe it was late May, beginning of June, we had asked the town council to transfer $625,000 from the Wallace Capital Improvement Project to the Board of Education's operating budget. We were advised from the town attorney that such transaction under the charter can only occur in the last six months of the fiscal year. We received a memo back from the mayor with a response in asking us to enter into a memorandum of understanding. At that time, we asked the board's attorney, Tom Mooney, to give us his opinion, his legal opinion, on the matters as it related to the memorandum of understanding and the three points that were asked by the town council for us to do. So to use the projected health benefits balance. And they outlined for, specifically for, the opening of the STEM Academy and our special education costs. And then there were other things in there, like furnishing receipts and things like that. So there was nothing in the memorandum of understanding to address the laid off teachers that was not addressed by the town council. And basically, I hope you've all had the time to read the opinion from Mr. Mooney. And I think we were just going to have a roundtable discussion on what the thoughts were, what everybody was thinking. I know that there was some discussion back and forth amongst board members. A lot of us wanted to meet earlier because we were really hoping to open the academies. But when we realized that we were going to have to wait a couple of weeks to hear back from Tom Mooney as to the legality of what might be happening, we decided to wait to have the meeting. And that's why we ended up having the meeting tonight. So we have the opinion back. Everybody's had a chance to read it. And I just wanted to get everybody's thoughts. Who would like to start? Anybody? Okay, if you guys could each talk into the microphone, we can't hear. Go ahead.
I did not have access. My email, my computer was out of commission, so I did not have access.
Okay.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Must have been turned on. So Tom had some interesting thoughts. Some of them are not in writing. And it was an interesting proposal, and I think a very creative one on behalf of the town council. But obviously, there are some very serious legal issues with regard to some of the things they asked us to do. Specifically, the one that was most important and one I was worried about was protecting all of you. Because if five of you had wanted to sign it, there would be real problems because it would be illegal. Because you would be breaking the law by operating in a deficit. The board is not allowed to do that. The town council is, so they can do it. So there would be nothing wrong with them doing it because they have the means to kind of fill in the gap, if you will. They have a contingency fund, or they call it something differently, rainy day fund, I think you're right. You don't. And so therefore, you can't do that. So I knew that was going to be a problem. And I didn't want to see any of you in jail, so I thought it would be good if we took a little extra time. The thing that keeps coming up and over and over and over again, why we keep entering into these situations, is when they start dictating how you're going to use the money, which is really problematic, and all of the other things that go along with that. They can't do that. And it's not anything more than, you know, once you open that door, it just starts over and over and over again. Now, the thing that I think was interesting about this, Tom said, technically, and it's all in writing, in multiple memos and on tape and everything else, they have admitted to you that of the $625,000 request that you have, $585,000, I believe, thousand dollars of it is required. Technically, according to the Connecticut Supreme Court, they have no option right now but to give it to you. Now, you could win that fight if you want. The reality is, you're going to have another fight next year. So while we have everything balanced and we do not have to cut anymore, I say leave it where it is and just use this as an example to try to get them to understand that, you know, there are boundaries and we all have to stay on our lanes at some point. We work together very closely in this town. Many towns don't. It may seem like we're always at war, but, and I mean, no disrespect, but I mean, that's the politicians, it's not the people who work here. It's what everybody sees on TV, unfortunately. But the town does function very well together. So, and I don't want to start any fights in the building, to be perfectly honest. So this is, it is what it is. You were in the right the entire time. You were right to do what you did. And I say take Tom's advice, and I believe that they're expecting. I don't know, I don't know what they're expecting, to be honest with you.
To speak to that, today, I actually received an email from Mayor Zartarian, and I'll just read it to you. It's very quick. "Mrs. Petronio, I think it's best at this point that Attorney Mooney contact our town attorney Ben N'Kona directly to resolve the supplemental funding issues initiated by the Board of Education." Roy. So that's what I received today. I had a question. I feel like the latter part of the letter, I understood. The beginning, I didn't quite understand what Tom was trying to get at about the MBR.
Oh, the MBR. So here's the thing, he was going back and forth because at one point, the conversation we had was it would count. And then he did a little further.
Okay, so what would count? The money that we spent on--
The 1.2 million that we have sitting right now will be added to our base next year.
For salaries.
He was going, kind of going back and forth. The answer is, and Tom is famous for this, it depends.
Okay, that's what I thought I read, and that's why I was confused. Go ahead.
I thought it was a no, you know, that it doesn't.
Right.
Go ahead, Josh.
Well, so my interpretation of it is that maybe yes, but in practice, no.
Right.
Because the Department of Education is the one that determines the minimum budget that we're required to have by the town.
Right.
And they don't currently have a process in place that would add to our bottom line through the type of spending from the contingency fund.
That's because that's all new.
So it's a no in practice.
Because it's new.
But if someone, if, and I don't think we ever should, but if a district was to challenge that type of thing in court, there would have to be some kind of ruling that forced the change in the Department of Education's procedure. Because they probably won't change their procedure just all of a sudden out of the clear blue sky.
So as it stands today, the 1.2 million is not part of our minimum budget requirement next year.
And I think it's kind of--
So we are--
Well--
In--
The town, we're all in this together.
Yeah.
People have to understand that. Doesn't matter who's who. We are in a hole. We are in a very significant hole that we're going to have to get out of. And they're going to have to get us out of it, or dismantle the entire educational system, which they're pretty close to the bottom as it is. So what are you going to do now? I mean, you kick the can down the road.
Okay, so all right, that's the MBR.
Yep.
Then the issue of Tom saying, once you've acknowledged that the board needs certain amount of money, you can't withhold it.
Right.
So the 500,000 that they have acknowledged--
Technically, they have to give you right now $585,000.
578--
So whatever, 78, yeah, whatever it was.
578,000.
And the reason was because they specifically split up the $625,000 and said that you need it for special ed, we realize that, and you need it for STEM academies, we realize that. But we don't think you need it for the teachers. That's essentially what they said, I'm paraphrasing. By saying that, they have admitted to them, you know, that it is necessary and therefore required. The council can't acknowledge the need. So when the Board of Education goes to the council, if it is acknowledged as a need, they're required to fund it. Bottom line. You could do that if you want to, I wouldn't recommend it.
Josh?
Right, but again, it's very similar. It's a theoretical have to fund it.
No, that's--
It's theoretical until we come to them with a bill at the end of the year saying, we can't cover these expenses. Here's the bill. Because there's nothing that would ever require them to have to front that money right now. If they've said it, and if we spent that money and couldn't cover it, they would have to--
There's actually Supreme, the Supreme Court actually made that decision.
But there's nothing that could force them right now to--
Right.
--to transfer an additional 500 grand into our account.
No, you'd have to go to court, and likely you would win. But is that something you really want to do?
Right, so I mean, it's essentially another theoretical--
Right, for us anyway, but it has happened.
Other comments, questions? Emily?
After reading it, I just felt like, especially, I mean, if it's not legal, it's not legal. And there's no way that I would ask our superintendent to be personally liable for that. I don't think that's appropriate. I don't think it's appropriate for us to take on that risk. I know, I don't have that, so I wouldn't ask anybody else to. But yeah, so after reading through all of this, it seemed pretty clear that it's not something that I can agree to, at least.
The use, I'm sorry, the part you were talking about is the use of the health, but the future--
Yeah, yeah.
--the use of the future health benefit money to fund the expenses that were--
Yes, thank you, yeah.
Agreed, thank you. Josh?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I mean, the analysis for me kind of ends at that point where you are saying you're going to spend money that's not actually in your budget, and you don't have anywhere on a potential promise in the future that's maybe non-binding. And anytime you're doing that, it's not only fiscally irresponsible, it's something we're not allowed to do as a board. And this is actually something that Mr. Sylvia and I had probably a three-hour discussion over a couple of meetings two years ago, budget time, about how you budget in terms of a trend line budget for what you expect to have happen, or versus how we do budget for the people we have on day one and what their salaries are going to be for the full year. Because we have to budget, and I never realized that that was how the statutes were written until I read that opinion by Tom. But we have to budget for what we expect to spend. And we can't, we can't be planning on spending more than we have budgeted. We're just not allowed to. So that's, the analysis for me ends there. I'm not sure why Tom would need to contact Attorney N'Kona. At this point, to discuss further--
I don't know what they would say.
--I don't think that's a good use of board resources because, I mean, even in practical terms, we can't hire, we couldn't fulfill those premises from the town council, even if we wanted to at this point. Because there's no way we could get the STEM Academy up and running, starting today, before school starts.
I think they kind of put Ben in a bad situation here. I don't know what they would, I can only imagine how that conversation would go between the two of them. Okay, what do you want to do? I don't know. Because there's nothing to do, really, you know? It is what it is, and--
Well, based on this, there was the option, they could transfer it, right?
Well, well, I hadn't thought about that. It's an option, but--
Mr. Sylvia? Can you talk into your microphone, please?
My apologies. Thanks for recognizing me, but I just realized that what I was thinking would be a point of order and not along with the agenda. So I have no comment.
Okay. Anybody else? Sharon?
So when we, in October, in the past year, spent extra money, what was left over from the health benefits money, in September, October, was that beyond what we expected to spend in the budget, à la Mooney's explanation?
No, you're still going to get your credit, whatever it is. We never know what it is.
Correct.
That's the problem. If it was a guaranteed amount of money, if they were able to tell you then what you're going to get now, you could then make some reasonable, you know, I don't want to say commitments, but, you know. But we've always used it to purchase either buses, or it hasn't been technology in recent years, it's been buses mostly, or, you know, those big ticket items that we can't keep getting taken out of our budget.
Right, but is it considered in our budget or out of our budget?
It would be in your operating budget, in your operating budget.
It is in--
Next year, next year, yeah.
Josh?
So I think a good example for that is, so we set our budget, and we're getting $50 from the town, and we hire teachers that cost $100, knowing that we're going to get $50 in health benefits money. And we can't do that because we were planning and hiring $100 worth, but we only got $50 at the start, planning on using the $50 later. And in the reverse, what we can do, and what we've done in the past, is we hire $50 worth because we're getting $50 worth. And when we get the additional $50, we bring in 50 more dollars. So, I mean, teachers is a bad example, but, you know, things. So if we, we have $50 worth of laptops in our budget, but we actually buy 100 at the start of the year, knowing we can fill it in later, that we can't do.
Right.
But if we buy 50 at the start, and then we buy an additional 50 when the other 50 comes in, we're allowed to do that. Because it's not budgeted from the start.
I'm actually kind of glad that you didn't, the board didn't do that, even if, because you, we've got another problem that Lou and I have been working on that we're going to share with you eventually. I just wanted to get the words right. You need to replace 19 buses. That's, well, you know, I'm trying to find an easy way to say that. But, you know, we just keep, keep not buying them, buying them, and we're at a point now where you have to pay the price, or unfortunately, it's all at once, but--
All right, well, so we'll get to that--
We'll get to that another time.
--for discussion. Mr. Sylvia was first, then Bob, then Jane.
Thank you. So following up on Dr. Braverman's question, in the past, we've taken the refunds that we've received from our health benefits, lovingly referred to by me as windfall, and it's nice to see. And we've generally, my experience thus far has been that we've applied that to the maintenance account to cover--
Maintenance of buses, yeah.
--actions of that nature. And generally, my understanding is, in watching how we've spent money over the last two years, we generally were very cautious with that account until we know that all of our other expenses have been covered, and then we do as much maintenance as we can with whatever's left in that account. Am I still on the right track?
Yep.
So now I'm coming back to Josh's comment. I agree, I cannot hire $100, counting on $50. But if I took $50 out of maintenance and moved it over to the salaries, I've now covered salaries. I reduced my maintenance budget, but I've now got my salaries at 100. And when the windfall, or whatever comes in, as Lou will report to us, comes in, we can then apply that to the maintenance that we've historically done in the past. And we are then in a position to address whatever maintenance we can with the funds available.
Right. If this were four years ago, I would have totally agreed with you. However, we have gotten our maintenance account, so if this is what you need to maintain 50-year-old buildings--
Because we did that this year.
We did, right. And now you go below--
Cut some maintenance this year to do just that.
Right, right, so we did. So you're below what your actual needs are to actually maintain the buildings. So you--
I don't see any empirical evidence that shows we're below anything in the maintenance account.
Okay.
And as I would like to remind Dr. Collins, that I was told that I play games, and you weren't going to play that game with me, when I asked for a listing, itemized listing, of all of the CIP expenditures we were planning on doing within the maintenance account for this year. I believe, Mr. Tofelt, I believe you were on copy for the response, and you were directed to tell me to stop playing games.
Who's playing games?
To that extent, I'm coming, I have the email.
Okay.
So to that extent, what I'm trying to say is, there's no, I have no empirical evidence that shows that we're below anything in the maintenance account. I'm suggesting that we consider that we could move funds from the maintenance account into the salary so that we are covered. And I grant this below the whole concept that is discussed. I understand what the meaning is. I don't agree with the position. Having said that, I understand where we're coming from. But from the, trying to get the STEM teachers and to say, I do agree also with Josh, at this stage of the game, it's going to be very difficult to find qualified individuals. That's a given. But I also understand, we have current qualified individuals that could provide that service to our students.
Where are they?
I'm told they're in our existing school system.
And what are they doing?
I'm sorry?
What are they doing?
I believe one's a science teacher and one is currently an aerospace teacher.
Middle school. Why-- How could they teach at the middle school and the high school at the same time?
I think it's called split facilities.
Well, they're only one person. What would they, how would they teach at both places? They're teaching full-time. They're teaching full-time at the middle school.
If they're full-time at the middle school, then I would say there's no opportunity for them to do a split--
Right.
--facility.
Right. They're teaching full-time at the middle school, in the academies, at the middle level. How could they then go to the high school and teach there too at full-time?
I don't have an answer for that one.
That'd be pretty hard to do unless you mastered the space-time continuum, which I don't think Mr. Holmes has done yet. He's good, but not that good.
So we don't have any qualified individuals at the high school--
We have all qualified teachers. They're teaching.
I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing, so--
Okay. We have all qualified teachers at Newington High School. They're all teaching. We have all qualified teachers at the middle school. They're all teaching. The kids are still there, and they all are assigned to kids. It's not like we have teachers just sitting around drinking coffee all day, waiting for something to come up. That'd be nice. No, it wouldn't. We wouldn't do it. They are all fully committed. I can't have them do something, I can't have anybody, if I had Jen Freeze go up to the middle school, or to the high school, what would she do with the kids at the middle school? You can't be in two places at the same time. There are people who believe, because of the schedule change, because the high school starts early, just go to the high school and teach in the morning. And then when the academy starts, they think at noon, go to there, teach at noon, and work just all day, apparently. It doesn't quite work that way. You also have an organization that you have in a contract that you have to follow. Plus, the academies don't start at noon, they start at 10:00. So if those teachers come in later, the only way to do it would be to get another teacher. You can't possibly take the people who are, believe me, over-- you may not agree with me on here either, they are overextended. Mr. Holmes works, I can't tell you how many hours he works. Same thing with Mrs. Freeze, I mean, the four of them, work non-stop to put those programs together. And I'm very proud of them. And why am I going to split it up? There are people who believe that they don't really need it at the middle level. Well, yes, they do. And we are the ones who made that decision years ago, not now, years ago. Because we needed the kids to enter the higher level math and science courses to get them, so they can get to the higher level at Newington High School. They weren't getting there. Now, these kids are entering high school, some of them, in senior math. So they can get to all of those high courses. Taking them out of the middle school and cut the legs off from under them, at a time when, because it's not an extended day program at the high school. It is at the middle level, which is what we needed to do as well to get the time in. So when they get up to the high school, they have all of the skills that they need to take all of those courses. If you cut them out, then you're right back to where you started from, and they don't have the skills that they need going into the high school. So you can't, you can't, they can't be in two places at one time, and the programs need to dovetail.
Pam?
Thank you, Nancy. Something to probably clarify, I think there's been some misunderstanding also about the program at the high school, and it is not just a one or two-period program--
Right.
--in medical sciences and aerospace. Because of the variety of courses and the course requests, although we might have, like Mr. Kowski's son moving up from grade eight, we also open those programs up, not only to our entering eighth grade into ninth grade aerospace students, but to all other students at the high school. So it, sort of, although it's still an academy, it's not keeping just a cohort. And that's in medical sciences and in aerospace. So those engineering courses and those science, medical science courses are opened up to every ninth through 12th grader at NHS. So last, this past year, when we did offer one medical science one, what we do set when we schedule at Newington High School, and probably our alumni at the table remember this, is the priority is given to your upperclassmen, your 11th and 12th graders. So that medical science course that Mr. Cruzy taught for us had none of our ninth graders in it. It had all of our upperclassmen, because it was their first opportunity to enter the world of medical sciences. So we need actually two full-time, two teachers at either the middle or the high school, who can teach the entire day. And as Dr. Collins said, the middle level isn't an extended day, but the teachers that we would need at the high school will be there for eight periods a day, not one or two. So we really have no ability to job-share in those positions.
Unless we put 350 kids in one class and then--
College lecture hall, it would not work. But I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Pam. Josh?
I appreciate the discussion, but this is less about relitigating what we did with our budget, and about the findings for whether or not we should take action on the town council's proposed MOU, which I think we should probably get back to, so we stick on. On task, when whether or not anyone thinks it's a good idea to take any action at all, I've made myself clear. Emily's made her point.
Jane?
I'm wondering if this is something that we can look at again, once we know what the health benefits is in October, and then perhaps talk about January opening?
Well, well, here's your problem. As I said, when I get the report on the buses, I think you may feel differently. Because we don't have the money for that either.
Josh?
But the other issue is that adding a teacher with one-time money is something we've been trying not to do.
Problematic.
Then you're digging yourself further and--
We're already in such a big hole.
--have teachers that will be on that same thing that we did last year, so--
And I really don't want to give people pink slips, you know, just attract, it takes a lot of work. And not that I'm into work, but I mean, you're attracting somebody from another district. Everybody thinks, put a science teacher in there just because they're certified. That doesn't work that way. You know, we have to go out and we have to find specialists.
We need to find a--
Mr. Holmes was a lieutenant colonel at NASA. I mean, they don't, just not just hanging around in teacher rooms somewhere, you know what I mean? It takes a lot of time and energy to find these people, to make sure they're the right fit. I would not recommend doing what we did. We did one class at Newington High School, and I'm actually glad the freshman didn't take it. So, because it wasn't what I wanted, wasn't what we had planned. So I want to either do it right or not do it at all.
Anybody around the table who hasn't spoken in regards to the MOU and your thoughts, or anybody? Cindy?
Yeah, I'm not willing to take any kind of risk like this. This is just not acceptable, and it's just not--
Bob?
Mrs. Morocco may have answered my question, but the, about, we are opening an academy for the students.
What?
You stated, okay. Since it's off the books, what will happen with the construction fund money from the state?
That's a great question.
And--
I don't know.
--since it's not opening?
I don't know. I don't know. Um, there, there are two schools of thought on that. One, if the state is willing to look the other way, knowing that the town is in a short-term bind, they may say, that's fine, we understand, especially, I think they should, with, with, with what's been going on up there, um, be a little more understanding. They could say, no, you have to pay it back. Tom isn't, he's still working on that one. So we'll say, we want to kind of get this one out of the way, before we got you into some legal trouble, before we get into the, that one, figure across from one at a time.
Mr. Sylvia?
So we're using part of the academy, are we not? The culinary, uh, students?
We're not using, we're using the academy, that was already there, part of it, so we are using partial, right.
So there was a part of the monies that we utilized on the culinary portion, right? The kitchen and the new, uh, grease sink that costs so much money and all that, we're grease-trapped, pardon me.
We had that already. Um, the kitchen didn't get a full rehab. We used it, we reused everything. Obviously, you couldn't use the floor again.
And have we received any formal notification from the state asking for us to return any portion of funds?
No, not yet. Uh, they don't know we're not opening.
So we have no actions to take because we have no request at this time?
Right. At some point, we have to file a, a report when we're finished. And we have, we can't lie to them. We have to tell them the truth.
But the facilities have been completed to the specifications that we submitted for the funding, right?
Right.
All right.
And we specifically-
Now, under, I understand that the program's not fully implemented for the intent of the facility, given where we're at.
Given it was aerospace and bio-sci, or medical sciences, yeah.
Um, all right. This is my ignorance of whatever the, how the funding is done, so I yield. Thank you.
It's, it's a reimbursement? At the end of everything, they send us back the percentage of what we spent.
Okay, but, but to, for, for further clarification to Mr. Sylvia's point, it was not, the new facility, can you describe what was already there and what programs are in it now besides bio? Okay.
We had, we had a culinary program. They had a dining room. Uh, the dining room fit 12 people. We have a culinary program. They have a kitchen. They have a dining room now that fits 120 people. So, uh, it's on the other side. It's where the wood shop was, so.
But was that part of the monies used in the renovation for biomedical and?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, now, we, we went after it first as a STEM facility. This is the primary two over there, aerospace and, and medical science.
Right.
The other was, I don't want to say thrown into it, but you were right there. I mean, we were gonna have to dig out the, the wood shop, and at one point, the architects wanted to put the aerospace in there. And so, well, that's kind of silly, because now you still only have a restaurant of 12 kids. How are they gonna?
So in the design of the STEM, we decided to-
Keep going back and back and back until they rearrange it the way we were able to see it. We were supposed to put, in addition, on, I don't know if you remember, it's the back part where the grass, we left the grass outline, um, because that, at some point, broke down, and the rumor got out there that it was going to be $4 million to do Phase 2. And everything broke down, and that's why we didn't get Phase 2. Um, and if you see it out there, it's, it's nine, how many, 2,000 square feet, 900 square feet?
Yeah, it's closer to 2,000.
2,000. So, e- even if it's 2,000 square feet, at, at 350 a foot, I mean, how, I don't know how you get anywhere close to $4 million. But-
Okay, so the, the new part of the, the new part of the academies is the biomedical, the aerospace, and some culinary. And culinary. But to Mr. Sylvia's point, we do have, and Pam, correct me if I'm wrong, we do have some high school academies that are open, the digital-
Yeah, those are not part of the renovation.
We do, but they're not part of the renovation.
Nothing to do with that, but right, so I just want, for the public to know, we do have academy programs-
Yes.
At the high school that are open. The, uh, digital arts.
We have our digital arts, we have our networking, we have our business and finance, and we have our culinary.
Thank you.
The three of them.
Okay, right, so the missing link now is the biomet, the STEM. Okay, all right, just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Other comments? Bob?
Is, is the academy right now open to those students that you were talking about, the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders?
If we had, they are open to the other academies, not the STEM academies. So Culinary Arts and Hospitality is open to everyone.
Right.
Um, our Networking and Digital Arts is open to everyone, our Business is open to every, Business and Entrepreneurship is open to everyone. So, yes, those are open to all students.
But, um, I think he was referencing, do you remember earlier, you, you were talking about the 11th and 12th graders who chose that class?
That was last year. We can't, we don't have a teacher with, um-
So, so Bob, those kids that requested, even though they were the 11th and 12th graders, we, that part's not open?
There will be no STEM Academy offerings.
Right.
The teachers are no longer available with reductions.
All right. Other discussion surrounding Mr. Mooney's opinion, and entering into a memorandum of understanding, is everybody in agreement that it's not something that we pursue at this time? Go ahead, re-say it. It's been a long day.
We'll do it in the positive way. Does anyone want to enter the agreement?
There we go. Anybody? No. Mr. Sylvia?
Was there a motion made?
No. This is a discussion. Do you have an opinion?
Not now.
Not now?
Correct.
What does that mean?
Well, I don't know what the motion is.
There's no motion. We're having a discussion, and we're wondering what your thoughts are about entering into a memorandum of understanding with the town council.
Uh, I mean, you know, if you want my thoughts, the spirit of the memo of understanding, I have no problem with. I do agree that there's two sets of opinions, depending upon which lawyer I'm speaking with, be it the town lawyer, or be it our lawyer. Uh, obviously, uh, my interpretation of, is, um, a lot of wordsmithing or interpretation of words, and how they're applied. And they've got excellent points, uh, and, uh, laws that they're pointing to. And they're, um, our attorney did point out that, uh, accepting that the memo of understanding would put our superintendent and ourselves at risk. Personally, I, I'm comfortable taking the risk, personally. My imposing that risk upon another individual, I can't do that. So, uh, to that extent, um, I can only vote as an individual.
Anybody else? Any other comments before we move on? No? Okay. Thank you. I'm going to, we have no possible action. We're going to go to discussion item number three. Uh, Mr. Sylvia, you asked that this be put on the agenda, a discussion surrounding social media?
Uh, yes, thank you. There were two items I submitted, but under point of order, we'll just talk about this one.
Um, what was your other one? I thought we encompassed it.
Uh, the other one was, it was also media, but it had to do with After the Bell. But that's not on this, so I can't talk about it. Uh, but we'll make that for future-
Okay.
It's, it's, um, the reason why I asked for social media to be placed on here was, is that, I noticed that there were, uh, a number of comments that are being made on social media under a pseudonym, not an individual's name. Which is causing a little bit of, um, confusion on who's actually making the statements. And some of the statements that are being posted under the pseudonyms for either the Newington Public School System or After the Bell, which basically represents us, are, uh, being, um, interpreted as defamatory. And so I'm a little bit concerned of any pseudonym that's being utilized that would represent the board and not represent the individual's opinion, and the individual being myself or any other individual that posts on social media. Utilization of the pseudonym would not be appropriate, in my opinion, as it would represent the entire opinion of the, the board, um, for those comments. So, to that extent, what I wanted to try to bring up was that I have no issue with an individual making their own personal comments or opinions on social media. I do have, uh, concerns when a pseudonym is utilized that represents a greater organization.
Josh, and Jane?
I, so I have no idea what you're talking about. What do you mean by pseudonym? And what is being posted?
A person answering a social media question under the moniker After the Bell, or under Newington Public Schools? Not knowing who the individual is that makes those responses?
So here's, here's the issue. You know, I, I didn't have a personal social media account, um, until recently, right? I don't, I, um, but I do have access to, uh, our district and, uh, After the Bell. And, uh, posting, when I post, it has my name on it. I thought everybody else could see my name too. Katie told me, no, only you can see that. So what comes up is After the Bell. I'm thinking, people see it's me. But Steve Parker can, can post there. Same thing with our district one. It could be me, it could be Katie, it could be, it could be, uh, Jay, it could be a number of people, Sophie, you know, to answer questions. And I thought the names came out underneath it. They don't, apparently.
I guess I'm confused what, what that matters, if it's you or someone deputized by you to speak on behalf of the district?
I, Mr. Sylvia has an issue with that. So what we've done is-
Are they, are they inappropriate posts? I'm like, I, I have no idea what we're talking about right now?
Right. So what we were using After the Bell, what we've done with After the Bell, what Steve wanted to do was to, uh, take comments that were, uh, being, being put out there in the, whatever, social media sphere, and, um, put out facts to either back them up or discount them. And so, not a discussion, but a, a, an FAQ, if you will. Um, just a running FAQ. And so that's what we started to do.
You're like answering questions from the public on Facebook?
Yes.
Okay. We have an issue with, there's an issue with that?
I'm sorry?
What, what's the, what's the issue with that?
He wants to see Dr. Collins' name, I'm assuming.
Uh, the individual's making it. For example, the After the Bell. No one's certain if it's, uh, Mr. Parker, or, uh, some other individual. It's a pseudonym saying After the Bell made the response, and everybody's questions come to me is, who's typing the message? I have no clue. I have no data. I have no facts of saying who made that response. So therefore, it's, it, there's a lack of ownership, but there's an implied message within that that represents the program or the school system. And I, I'm just seeking greater clarity, uh, from, on an individual responsibility when a comment is made, and it's, it's directly accountable. It'd be much like, you know, I, I'm very, very open and transparent what I say, and everybody knows that it's my name, and so then I'm held accountable for whatever I've typed. So on that same line, I'm trying to basically say, if we're having any kind of representation that represents us as a body, or represents the school system, that it should be the individual themselves that are making the comment, and not the collective, um, name that represents us.
That's been addressed.
Okay. I have a couple-
Josh?
-solves. Um, one, I, I, I feel like my opinion as to anyone posting as Newington Public Schools, I, I think that just because we've hired Dr. Collins as superintendent, he's allowed to speak as Newington Public Schools i- in any form of any kind, but I, I don't think that's here there.
And I don't disagree. He has the right to say whatever he wants under his name.
No, as, no, as acting for Newington Public Schools, but I, I don't, I don't even think that that's the discussion that I, I really want to have.
We don't do that on, on the district side. We don't do that under Newington Public Schools.
But I, I thought I heard you say "defamatory" in your opening remarks about why this is on the agenda.
There were defamatory comments that were being made.
By someone under After the Bell or under Newington?
Yes.
Like, defaming other people?
Community residents.
Okay. Well, that's something that's concerning, is that?
It's all documented. It's there to read. That's what, that's the only reason why I'm trying to bring this up, is, is that, uh, I would like, personally, I would like to see the pseudonyms, and I'm using that loosely, but the NPS or the After the Bell, demonstrate and communicate just facts and information, if that's what's going to be used. Everything else, that's a personal opinion, be it a political viewpoint, be it whatever it is, it's an individual's name that can be directly identified within the, uh, community.
And Dr. Collins, you said that's already been addressed?
Yeah, Katie set me up on my own, uh, Facebook account, and, uh, so I'm-
So now you're, when you post, it's under your name?
Yep.
Okay.
And I thought it was before as well. And, uh, she said that to me a couple of times, and it was under, well, all I do on the, uh, NPS is we typically post, it could be any number, one, any one of us. We typically only post, um, things that are going on in the district. We never have any conversations or anything like that. Most people ask. But After the Bell was, was designed specifically to engage the community in different types of conversation that, that really needed to take place, uh, because I think we were going in a direction that was not becoming of a community, in my personal opinion. And so we needed to have a way to engage the community with two-sided conversations rather than one.
Jane?
I think what Mr. Schulman was saying about that, under NPS, you know, you have a complete right to do that on behalf of the NPS, but I, I understand what Ms. Sylvia was saying about After the Bell. It would be nice to know if it's you or Mr. Parker, because it's completely different. So I think that makes sense to have a name.
Completely. Yeah, I understand that now. I, I, when I see it, it has my name on it. And Katie had, took her five times to explain to me, no, just you see that. I thought everybody else saw it.
So it's been addressed?
Oh, yeah.
Cindy?
But I like to caution that when we're responding for New, Newington Public Schools, when we're doing those, I, I prefer for those answers to be factual answers-
Absolutely.
In opinions, not-
We don't do any of that.
Not shared. It's not, you know, and this and, it should be factual opinions to selves. It's not an opinion, in my, it's not professional to give opinions. I think it's the facts that, and that's all we answer, is the facts, and that's, I'd appreciate if that, we made sure that that happened.
And that's what the Newington Public Schools site is for. We don't do any of that, any of that stuff there.
Sharon?
Is there anything that the public could perceive as Board of Ed documentation, Board of Ed-driven, that we've written anything?
No.
It's just you?
Newington Public Schools would be me, no matter who writes it. After the Bell would be either my, me or Steve Parker. But now, it will come out as, because I saw Steve's name on there, so his came out, and I thought mine did too.
Any further discussion? No? Emily?
I'd like to say, it's kind of hard to have a discussion on things I'm not really sure I know what you're talking about. So when we have a meeting, I thought that was kind of, uh, one of the procedures was that we would all come to the table with the same information, and we're all speculating on the words that you've used, and I, I don't know what you're talking about. Josh doesn't know what you're talking about. I know Cindy doesn't know what you're talking about. Sharon doesn't know what you're talking about, so it's really hard to even have a discussion on it, because I don't have any information.
Any other comment? Okay. Are we on the agenda? Uh, we're going to go to item D, remarks by board members. We would like to go around. Anybody else have anything else they'd like to discuss? Anybody? Jane? When's our next meeting? September, what? Okay, hang on, one second. Okay, Deb?
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna, um, ask for an agenda item added to that meeting.
Yep, okay. Any further discussion? No more remarks by board members. Okay, go to item E, a motion to adjourn. Okay, second by Emily, and we are adjourned at 7:49 PM. Thank you.